-- Board Meeting to Order for June 18th. We'll do roll call first, so members of the Board get a chance to introduce themselves, and then we'll move on to our business. So Pat.
Secretary to the Board.
And this mic here, as I've been told, is just to be picked up for the cable TV. It isn't actually amplifying our voices, so we have to speak loudly. Sandy Venner, Chairperson of the Planning Board.
Rob Atwood, Vice Chair.
Ron Barnes, Architect.
John Thomas, Planning Board.
Dennis Brody, Planning Board.
Robertson Abaldi, Inspection Services.
John Pearson, Conservation Commission.
So, we have the minutes from the June 4th, 2013 meeting to approve. Any corrections seen as necessary, or motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor? Thank you. And now we can move on with the continuation of the site plan review hearing for Dollar General. And hold on one minute as I get my paperwork. I guess my first question really is whether or not pretty much everyone in this room, either were, if you were here a month ago when we opened the public hearing, or if you've watched it on cable television, or if you've heard from your neighbors, if you sort of have a basic understanding as far as how site plan review works, or if you want me to reiterate that review again, what this process is about. So why don't I have it, raise your hand if you'd like me to give an explanation of what we're doing here tonight in regards to the hearing with Dollar General. Okay. We seem to have a number of people out there who didn't hear it the first time, so let me get my notes on that. is a site plan review hearing because of that is required underneath our zoning bylaw in rural highway for this type of development. What is not required is a special permit. A special permit would be required for certain uses, but this is one of their permitted uses by right. And that, in fact, has been the case all along this area of town. We call it rural highway now. We used to call it the commercial district, but it is the area along 110 where it was intended that there would be commercial development and potentially commercial development on a larger scale than what can be accommodated in the village square, where we also want to see thriving commercial development. One of the main points is that the review of the site plan review, the purpose of the Site Plan Review Committee is that, in fact, we ensure that the development of something that can be developed by right is indeed in, for the best interest of the town and the nature in which it is developed, and that it does, to try and mitigate any potential harm that there might be. As stated here, the, we are to be looking at the town's interest to promote functional and aesthetic design, construction, and maintenance of such development to minimize any harmful effects on surrounding areas. It is the intent of the Site Plan Review Process to regulate rather than prohibit uses through reasonable conditions that may be required by the committee. And in fact, always in the past, when we do a site plan review, we attach to it all the conditions that we feel are necessary for the project to meet this criteria, and then it really is up to the building commissioner who needs to get permit the property and going forward, see that the conditions are being complied with. And our building commissioner is in fact part of our Site Plan Review Committee and sits at the other end of the table down there, Bob Sinabaldi, so he'll certainly be aware of everything that is brought forward tonight and in the past and going forward. The other part that has been happening with this project was the request to the ZBA for a special permit because the entire parcel that is being viewed here for development falls in the Water Resource Protection District. Now, this is a special permit, and that special permit could be approved or denied by the ZBA. The ZBA approved the special permit, but it is my understanding that, in fact, that approval is being appealed by some group of local residents, which is certainly the right to do. So where I wanted to start, because that matter will have to be resolved before the project can fully go forward, the question to the applicant is, there's really a couple of choices here. We could suspend the site plan review process until such time as there's a determination made on that appeal of the special permit granted by the ZBA, or we can continue with the site plan review process, and we would, this board would put as one of its conditions that that matter would have to be resolved in a way in which allowed the project to go forward. Otherwise, all our conditions are moot, because the project can't move forward. So I'm looking at you as far as determining, you know, what action you wish to take.
[inaudible]
Okay. The, I think then where we want to start tonight, because I know it's, was certainly one of the issues that came up most frequently in the discussions at our last hearing, was the impact on the traffic in the area. And in fact, the applicant has submitted a full traffic impact study, and that in turn has been reviewed by a consulting engineer, engineer, is that correct? Engineer for the Board. And so I would like to have the applicant present what their findings were in that traffic impact study, and then we'll ask our engineer to comment on that.
Is there any particular place you'd like me to stand?
Yeah.
Maybe I'll move up here, is that?
Yep.
All right, great. My name is Jason Adams. I'm a traffic engineer with Nishman Associates. My coworker Gary McNaughton was here a couple weeks back at the first hearing. We left the hearing with a set of issues that we wanted to look into more, which culminated in the preparation of a traffic impact study, which has subsequently been reviewed. Essentially, what we did was look at the existing roadway conditions around the site, taking a look at roadway speeds, available site distance, the crash history of the intersection of Bear Hill Road and East Main Street, and taking a look at the traffic volumes. We collected traffic volume data back in May as part of this project. We moved all of that information forward, including meeting with the police chief to go over the crash history. We got a level of comfort with the safety of the intersection of Bear Hill Road and East Main Street, as well as the expected safety at our site driveways. We performed capacity analysis consistent with standard engineering practices, which showed that we will not have a noticeable impact on the traffic operations of either East Main Street or Bear Hill Road. This is a pretty light generator in terms of traffic. We would expect to see probably about a vehicle every two minutes coming in and out of the site during the weekday afternoon peak hour, maybe a little bit closer to a vehicle every minute during the Saturday midday peak hour. You know, that's, in terms of other retail uses, that's about as low as you can get for a site this size. We feel that the traffic itself will integrate itself very well into the existing roadway system. The site driveways are shown to operate at a very acceptable level of service, and we don't expect there to be any kind of negative impact on safety or operations as part of this project. Would you be happy to go into more detail about anything, or I don't know if you want?
Just one thing, and as, way of explanation for myself and others, as it's referenced in your report and the responding report, is regards to doing the count of existing traffic and determining what indeed is the traffic flow in the area. There's reference to permanent count stations and non-permanent count stations. What exactly are those?
So MAST D O T maintains roadway counters at specific locations throughout the state so that they can track the flow of traffic day-to-day, month-to-month, year-to-year, and that helps them understand the flow of traffic on their roadways primarily. So that's a really good source as you're coming into a situation to understand, you know, the historical growth of traffic volumes and also the fluctuation between January or May or June or July, you can understand how the traffic may vary in different parts of the state. So that's the, those are the permanent count stations. What we did as part of this project was we collected manual turning movement counts. So we actually had someone out at the intersection of Bear Hill Road and East Main Street counting the specific vehicles at that moment. So we counted from 4:00 PM.
And can you tell us just what time of day and what day of week that person was there?
Sure. We counted on Wednesday, May 15th, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and then on Saturday, May 18th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. That's the typical commuter peak period on the weekday, and then a typical Saturday midday shopping, everybody's kind of out of their house, moving around.
We didn't do count?
We did two counts, yes.
You weren't on Saturday?
One on Saturday.
You didn't do any morning counts?
We did not. We selected those two time periods because it's the greatest combination of traffic from the site and traffic on the roadway. So we're essentially trying to find the peak overall period of a week, and for a retail use like this.
Do you have any more? Or if you want to watch? If you have any? I understand why you wouldn't do any of the counting.
The traffic for a site like this is going to be much higher during the weekday afternoon. People are coming home from work, and especially during the Saturday midday peak period.
If you're open at 8:00, you're going to affect traffic. I don't care what you want to say. You are going to affect traffic, I think you are, because I don't see a picture of it.
I think you need to do a little more counting, so that you get a better picture of how you're impacting the town of Merrimack at Bear Hill Road and East Main Street. That's my call.
Maybe if we can have Jennifer Conley speak to this as far as just also to telling, speaking to, you know, what is standard industry practice here and how much this complies with it, and, you know, don't be afraid to go, I've kind of marked point through point here of what you put in your report to us with about 10 points, so.
I might have to speak a couple of times to get my point across. To address that point that he's raising, we took a look at the trip generation during the morning peak hour. It is expected to be about 35 vehicles at the site, and during the afternoon peak hour, it's about 62 vehicles at the site.
At the site.
Correct. So although you might be right, maybe the AM is higher on the baseline, the impact of the site becomes less. The higher the baseline is, the background is, the site's impact percentage-wise is less. So they did analyze when the site's impact is expected to be greatest, just to address that concern. That doesn't mean you don't have a concern in the AM peak hour, but just to provide that clarification. So we went through the report and reviewed all the different parts. We took a look at the existing conditions. Overall, the existing conditions were collected correctly. They took a look at existing, as he already outlined, PM peak hour and Saturday peak hour traffic. He took a look at crash data in the area, and we spot-checked that, and that was correct. There are a very limited number of crashes there currently. They did quote in the report some speed data that backup was not provided for that, but I'm sure that's something that they could provide the Board, just to provide that backup. We took a look at the seasonal adjustment, and I know that that is a concern here, because in the summer months, you sometimes get kind of cut-through traffic coming off the highway. Taking a look at back four or five years' worth of data, May is typically the highest or the second-highest month traffic-wise, and consistently, it's higher than the summer months. So even though you may have a spike on a couple of days, you know, a couple of Saturdays when beach traffic is particularly heavy, it's not enough to bring that July or August average up. The July and August are still lower than May, so they still analyzed a conservative condition. That's not to say there's not going to be a couple of days that it's going to be much worse than anything you ever see in May, but it's just a couple of days, and it averages out over the course of the month to actually be less than May. Taking a look at the future conditions, it's one of my few critiques, it doesn't really amount to much, but I would have used a more aggressive growth rate, because not only does the count station on 110 have some positive growth, unlike a lot, most of the state truly has had negative growth in the past few years, you know, obviously with the economic conditions, but the accounts, some of the count stations very close to the site do have positive growth. So I would have assumed a little more of aggressive of growth rate, but the difference between a half a percent per year and a percent per year really doesn't amount to that many more trips. So I don't think it would make much of a difference when you look at, you know, the conclusions. I don't think it would really change the operations very much. I just probably would have assumed a little more growth.
And this, that is what they call in the no build.
Correct.
Which is, as I was reading this, is contingent upon, what they're looking at is whether or not anything else has been permitted or approved in the vicinity.
Correct.
Of this development. And in fact, you know, we certainly can't say what's going to happen three years from now.
True.
But that is right, that nothing else has been approved. We know we've got some properties that are sitting there.
Potential.
Potentially. We know we've got some properties for sale that are very developable, but actually, as one of our property owners just raised his hand there in the vicinity, is there anything, Dick, you wanted to add regarding that?
I thought the toll broiler said I would approve, and that was a thorough traffic study, which was done only about eight or 10 years ago. So you've got a recent traffic study done for 216 units turned over. So I just wanted to make sure that's.
Okay. I thought maybe, Dick, you were going to be speaking to whether or not you had any other plans for development in the area, as I saw the for-sale sign there next to the post office. But yes, there's nothing that, we can only be hypothetical about it.
Correct. And that's the problem. Typically, the way it works is you have to account for anything that has a permit and that is able to develop. If there is a site that has potential for development, they will probably have to come before a town board. So it's usually whoever submits first gets in first.
Yes.
And is not responsible to account for other potential traffic.
That might come later. We've got to deal with it when they come forward.
Correct, correct. Then, site trip generation was calculated using industry standards, and as I said, I had run my own analysis, which is why I could provide you with that AM versus PM comparison. They did not assume that any of the traffic was passed by, which is something that is more typical in something like a dollar store on your way home, you might pop in and pick something up. They did not assume that. They assumed all the traffic was new traffic, so that they kind of present a worst-case scenario as to what the impact is going to be at that intersection.
By the way, are people, are you able to hear? I was afraid of that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll do my best again, I apologize. We also reviewed the site distance section, and because in our scope of site visit was not included, we weren't really able to comment on that. They did mention in their report that there was shrubbery that would need to be cut back, and since that time, I've become aware of a letter from the police department that has a concern, is concerned about the grading on the site, and it is more than just shrubbery that needs to be cut back. The site does need to be graded, and they will have to, I would suggest a condition, if you move forward, that does commit them to maintain sightlines at that location. Currently, the sightlines are impaired by that property and by the grading on that property. Overall, the review was, the traffic study was completed adequately. As I said, there were a couple of things that were either missing or that I might have done a little more, a little differently, but overall, I found it to be completed in a conservative way to kind of show the worst-case scenario of the site impact. You certainly have some special concerns, obviously, but as far as the typical traffic study, they were conservative. May was a conservative month. The trip generation was completed conservatively. So I think you have a good estimate of what your typical condition is going to be out there, or even a more worst-case, not necessarily the worst case, but a more worst-case condition being analyzed. And my major concern is the sightlines being maintained at that intersection, because obviously, you don't have an accident history now, but in the event, you know, that there are limited sightlines, you could end up with an accident problem at that location. One final item that was raised by the police chief as well was interest in left-turn lanes. To install a left-turn lane on any roadway, you have to meet certain volume thresholds, and that's certainly something that can be easily be checked, and in addition is the question of the jurisdiction of the roadway, and whether MAST D O T is interested in having a turn lane at that location. But that's certainly good suggestions of items to be looked into, the question of a turn lane at that location. That was a great suggestion, and, you know, I'm sure the proponent can address that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Jennifer before she gives up the mic? Otherwise, I was next on a turn, actually, to the chief of police and to, you know, Eric, to speak to the memo that you shared with us and what Jennifer was just referencing.
My name's Eric Shears. I'm your police chief. I had reviewed the traffic study that was completed, and had actually met with one of the traffic engineers and looked at our accident data with him, spent considerable time, and got a good picture, or he got a good picture of what to expect at that intersection. However, I do have a couple of concerns that I raised with the Board in the letter, and I think that that intersection, Bear Hill Road, is a rural roadway, and when we build a commercial establishment, we need to turn that roadway into somewhat more of a commercial roadway. It needs to possibly be widened, the, we talked about sidewalks being installed for pedestrian safety, so that was one of my concerns. When traffic turns onto Bear Hill Road from Route 110, they actually, traffic heading westbound towards Hayrow, as they make a right-hand turn onto that intersection, they're actually crossing into the southbound lane of Bear Hill Road, and that's partially because of that corner that would have to be addressed with the site distance, but also because of the width of the roadway. So that would be a suggestion, is to really improve that roadway. The other concern that I had is, of course, that was just addressed, is the site distance. Currently, the way that intersection is built, you stop at the stop line that's currently there, you can't see any traffic on Route 110. But if you travel up to Route 110, you put your, the nose of your car right at 110, and you look to your left, and you look to your right, you can see a little bit, but it's still obscured on the left-hand side by that hill. So that was one of my concerns that I think we can look at addressing. And then the third concern that I had is, with an increase in traffic, and I don't, I'm not a traffic engineer, so this is just one man's opinion, with this increased in traffic, I think we need to put left-hand turn lanes on Route 110 onto Bear Hill Road. We also need to have right-hand turn lanes or pull-offs into both entrances of the Dollar General, and that's something that could be incorporated probably in their design. I don't know if the MUTCD, the manual that DOT looks at, would allow that, but certainly that would allow traffic to get off the roadway and make a safe turn into the establishment. So those were my concerns.
Eric, do you know, so because it is a state highway, we would need MAST D O T to, they would have the final say on what happens there as far as the turn lanes, correct?
Certainly, on Route 110, they would, they have jurisdiction.
Okay. But, and so what's the process to ask them to do something and to get them to do it in a timely fashion?
You need to contact the district office, and they'll come out and look at it and decide if it's even an option or not. There's a process involved, traffic studies, et cetera.
Does the Board have any more questions for anyone in regards to the traffic before, then I'm going to open it up before we move on to other matters. I'll open it up to the general public, just because I think everybody wants to talk about this one, and let's resolve this before we move on to other matters.
Yeah, John Thomas, I just want to ask one question. Did anybody look at the traffic flows? Did you look at the traffic flows?
The flows?
The flows into the site? You did. What did you think about them? On the, I'm talking about the plan, the actual plan of how the traffic flows into that site, whether it's one-way traffic, a two-way traffic.
Yeah, I'm not sure I would advise you getting that. The circulation on the site?
Yeah, off of the main road, okay, into the site and out of the site. They had proposed two-way traffic into the site and out of the site, off of the main road.
Right.
And I think there should be one-way traffic. As a traffic person, I'm assuming you're a traffic engineer.
I am, I am a traffic engineer.
What is your opinion on that?
My opinion on that is that, based on the analysis shows that it will operate with acceptable levels of service, which means that, like a report card, levels of service are graded from A to F in these intersections, so the site intersections are going to operate at good levels of service, so it will operate acceptably. The delay will be reasonable. It won't be as long as you have an encounter coming off of Bear Hill, because it'll be less traffic than at Bear Hill, there'll be more gaps available. So as far as two-way traffic, it certainly is sufficient for two-way traffic. I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend, purely for traffic engineering reason, operational reason, eliminating any movements. That's not to say that it might not make their site better, there might be reasons to eliminate movements, but I don't see it based on the analysis results.
So you don't print onto a main road two entrances and exits off of Bear Hill Road as well as the entry and exit into the site off the main drag?
Uh huh.
If that's going to have an impact, that's going to create a danger because the sightline, the road's curved as it comes around the corner?
Well, it certainly, right now, there is a sightline problem, without a doubt, but, and again, I can't comment on just how well the site will be graded out, but if the site is graded, as I'm sure the Board will ensure that it is, there will no longer be the sightline concern that is there now, and I completely understand why there is that concern currently. But once that bank is taken away, that really will open up that area and make the sightlines much better. I do agree with you, there is no denying, anytime you put a conflict point anywhere on any roadway, you increase the potential for two vehicles to get into an accident. I mean, that is a fact, but I don't think it's any worse so at this location than anywhere else, say, along that stretch of 110. Okay? Anyone else?
Yeah, that's our mic.
Yep.
What happened to the other one already?
Yeah.
Down.
Yep.
What happened to the other one already? Ah, down there. Okay.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I have a question for the board. We know that we have a potential concern about the traffic being generated existing on Bear Hill and 110. We know that we're going to be adding to that. The chief has suggested maybe we revamp Bear Hill Road interchange on 110. So the question I have to the board, are we going to request that that be done?
One thing I do have for our traffic engineer, Rob Atwood. When I look at their proposed access onto 110 on the south side of the site, and I take into account the knoll that's there at Bear Hill Road, and we're making a left-hand turn out of the lot, that, to me, says that you would have to bring down the elevation of Route 110 to have a clear sightline. What would the sightline be from that point of the proposed entrance, or, excuse me, exit onto 110 with it being two ways?
I wanted to make clear, I'm not committing, but there is no reason to make that sightline. You know, you think that that should be part of the execution, which is true, because there is no reason that they should make a left turn out of that location. If this site, what is part of the action, is still, I mean, there is a concern, there is, during the ramping, there are, it's very difficult to predict what will happen once they grade it out, really, by that, by running there. I can't do that. I have, I have a duty to ask.
Well, you just said what I was expecting you to say. You've got to measure it. And I think to get a complete traffic study here, we do need these sightlines included in here, so we can make a full and justifiable decision. And...
Are you comfortable with the fact that the site is modified, that it's possible?
I, I agree with you on the site being modified, but I'm specifically, so you have an understanding, I'm specifically talking about the paved roadway, Route 110, and that knoll right there, and the current elevation of Bear Hill, we'd be at a lower elevation, as everyone knows, down in front of Bonnie's house. It's much lower than at the elevation of Bear Hill Road, so.
Yes, actually, to the question Rod raised, I actually wanted to hear what the applicant response to that was. And also, while, oh, yeah, I think it covers it. I mean, to the matters that the chief was raising in regards to the, you know, how in fact the, the intersections would be constructed.
Right. So speaking to the intersection of the site driveway with 110, that's your primary question here. Because of the curve at 110, we actually have a sightline that's perfectly fine, even without touching the corner here at Bear Hill Road. We measured that to be in excess of 650 feet. The required sight distance on that roadway for a speed of 40 miles per hour is about 450 feet. So this sightline, looking back to the right past Bear Hill Road, is not impacted by the knoll at the, at the intersection of Bear Hill Road. What's, what's impacted by the knoll is, is the Bear Hill Road approach to 110. And, and like the chief said, when you get to the stop bar, you know, you do have some issues with visibility. As you creep up a little bit, that's greatly increased. So as, you know, as part of the project, being able to help grade that intersection will help the Bear Hill Road approach to 110, but we're fully confident sightlines already can be maintained at the site driveway intersection with 110, in both directions, not just looking right. They're both well in excess. Speaking to the chief's points, Luke DiStefano met with Mass DOT today.
Yeah, good evening again, Luke DiStefano, Boulder Engineering. Because East Main Street is a DOT-maintained right-of-way, we were asked to potentially set a meeting with DOT and talk to them about the proposed project, and what their initial thoughts were on the curb cut, on the development in general. At that request, I met with the district permits engineer, Mike Formicella, and also the district traffic engineer, Mike Harris, earlier today, presented this exact plan to both of them, and they allowed me to tell you this evening that, based on the current design, Mass DOT is not requiring any mitigation to East Main Street, or they would not require mitigation to East Main Street, and that, with the exception of a few very minor tweaks to the actual layout of the curb cut, they have no issue with the plan as presented right now. DOT has indicated that they would entertain a permit to access the right-of-way once local approvals are in hand, which is the typical operating procedure for Mass DOT. But again, at the end of the day, Mass DOT indicated to us that they have no issue with the current site development or the existing curb cut access, egress onto East Main Street. So they would not require mitigation, would not require any changes to the layout as presented.
I want to start with a question on that. Did anyone from Mass DOT, the direction, come out and report this, or did they just go over it?
I can tell you that while we were there, they called up the site on their computer. They looked at the site. They have photos of the site.
But this was a different site? They didn't actually come out?
No, they did not.
So somebody wants to pull it out?
Hold on a second. I, I haven't opened it up to the audience yet, and I think one of our members had a question.
I remember there, I know the G W is, I'm not sure, addressing, saying that they wanted the banking removed for, one, for sight, for sightline, as well as the installation of a sidewalk that was to run from the start of that property on East Main Street all the way to the end of its property on Bear Hill Road. So in doing that, we're going to remove, because we're not going to shorten the width. I just want everybody to understand, we're not going to shorten the width of that corner. That corner is going to be, that, that roadway will start, the sidewalk will start somewhere where the banking is now, so that there's more than adequate movement on that corner.
Correct. And one of the things we looked at is the grading at the East Main Street curb cut is basically at elevation 116. The elevation at the intersection of Bear Hill Road and East Main Street is 115. So you're actually a little bit higher at the curb cut, and then it starts to drop down. So again, if there's a visibility concern, as noted, the curve helps provide additional visibility, but the fact that you're actually going to be a little bit higher than the intersection elevation at the curb cut. So again, based on our traffic engineer's review of the site and the existing grading out there, we don't anticipate any sight distance issues at all. And we are fully amenable to reducing the berm. If you recall, one of the first things we indicated, that we would take down that berm, but there was some concern by the neighbors and the community that, that would require a removal of trees, and it would impact the landscaping there, but it seems as though, with the police chief's comments, comments from the board, that reducing the berm would help in all aspects, or would help in sight distance and the overall development of the project.
So now, and if somebody can make a mic avail, if you could make your mic available to whoever in the audience wants to speak, because otherwise, you won't get picked up on cable TV. We can hear you in the room, but they can't hear you on cable TV. Okay, Carol's going to handle the, making the mic available to whoever wants to speak. And we're, right now, we're on, you know, the subject of traffic, and any concerns or suggestions that you may have in regards on how to address the issues related to traffic, and the, the impact and the roadway in the flow in the area. I think Carol's bringing the mic around. She's going to get her exercise tonight.
Kevin Groden, 22 Bear Hill Road. Just a couple of points that I had as far as the traffic. Most of, most people here live on lower, lower Bear Hill Road, okay? And we're the ones that really are mostly impacted by the road itself, not just the fact that they want to put this project there. But we deal with this every day, okay? I have a sightline that's about 220 feet at the end of my driveway, and I still have to look and look again, because coming down Bear Hill Road, commuters in the morning, it's difficult at best. That's just a point that's well-known to the residents, okay? Did want to ask a question about whether Dollar General would consider making the exit onto East Main Street a right turn only and exiting, so that they're not going to be cutting across 110 one-way and making the traffic, you know, something's wanting to happen there. It's not, you know, it's when, okay? I mean, is that a consideration to make it a little safer? I do agree that even though the DOT may not warrant it, I hate that word, but warrant the fact that it needs turning lanes there, you know, the board should take real serious concern and thinking about making it one of your conditions, all right? Just things to think about. Dick Wadhouse's comment about 260 condos, that's quite a ways up the street, and we're dealing with the intersection of Bear Hill Road, okay? It's a dangerous street on a good day, so let's, you know, I know you know that. And I only had one question, and that was, are these stores franchised, or are they owned by a general corporation?
They're corporate.
They're corporate-owned? Okay, thank you.
So the, yeah, why don't we accumulate questions in the audience, and then we'll have you respond, just because of dealing with the mic.
Hi, my name's Sharon Satkis. I live in Three Spencer Way. I have a question for the board in regards to the three bus stops that sit in that area. There's two that are right there. One goes to the Penntucket School Systems, one goes to the Woody Ear Schools, and then further down at the intersection of Spencer Way, there's another bus stop there. I was wondering if your traffic analysis would consider doing a time study during these times, between the hours of between 7:30 and 8:15, and then again, between the hours of like 2:00 or 1:45, and like the 3:15 hour. I think at that particular time, you're going to find traffic to be a little heavier. These buses not only picking up children at the beginning of Bear Hill Road, but on the further end of Bear Hill Road, and the traffic I think you'll see is a little bit heavier than what your analysis showed this evening. The only other thing I'd like to say is that, obviously, if there's a consideration for this, five days left of school, many schools are out, I'd like to propose that, that study be done in September. Thank you.
Well, just, does anyone else want to raise anything in regards to traffic before we start picking up on these? Okay. So everybody, if we can, we'll rely upon our clerk to take notes to make sure that we keep these accumulated, and then we can go back to those who can respond.
Okay. Just had a simple question about what, what's the acceptable limit? So I appreciate all the, the concern for safety at the intersection, and sightlines, and traffics, and, you know, sweeping turns and all of that, but I haven't heard anybody talk about, you know, what the acceptable limit is for the residents to be sitting at the end of Bear Hill Road with the increase in traffic, and any planned or unforeseen building that could take place further north up Bear Hill Road. Condos, whatever. There's a giant farm sitting at the end of my road that, I don't know, it, it could be developed. It can't be developed.
APR. No, no, just there, you know, certainly in regards along 110, there could be further development, but the, the nature of this development, the rural highway, goes 300 feet north of 110, so at the northern boundary of this property. Beyond that is all agricultural residential. Two-acre zoning doesn't allow any commercial development, doesn't allow for apartments to be developed there, and Sargent's Farm, most, well, not all of the land, but a good portion of that land is an agricultural preservation restriction, which means it can never be developed.
If there's something that can't be changed?
It could, there's some of it that could be put into a subdivision. So there's always the potential that anybody who has a large parcel along there could sell that off and have a subdivision, but they're going to be required to do two-acre lots, unless they do open space residential, but they will still have to have a parcel of sufficient size to do that. But once again, as it was said by our traffic engineer, we, you, we really can't base this upon what could be, because when in fact something should be, then we have to make the determination upon that particular project based upon existing conditions at that point in time.
Understood, but I understand you're also a planning board, and you represent us, right? And so, planning means not today, it means what's down the road, okay? And you need to take into consideration, you know, and I understand a lot of this is going to be unknown, but you need to take that into consideration to, you know, whatever extent you can to protect the residents, to make sure that, you know, we're not turning into 110 in Chelmsford. I travel those roads a lot myself, and they were backroads like Bear Hill Road, and, you know, now people are sitting there for half an hour at a, an intersection that dumps out on the 110, just like Bear Hill Road. So I don't want to see that happen here. And I appreciate all the concern for safety, but I live here, I pay a boatload of taxes, and I want to make sure that I'm not inconvenienced, okay? And my, my lifestyle does not change from the way it's been for the past 25 years. Thank you.
Yeah, hi, I'm Walley Wonnike, and I'm from West Shore Road, and I travel Bear Hill every day to get anywhere, basically.
The reason I wanted to ask a question is, coming down traffic, I don't, it's kind of counting cars or whatever the word ends up saying, it has to be counted. But Dollar General must know roughly how many customers they're going to propose to have in a course of a day, or a course of a week, or whatever. Otherwise, they wouldn't be coming here, because it wouldn't be profitable. So given that, there should be a number associated with how many people are going to be driving down 110 or the other road, and it should be commended and added to whatever study is already done. So I think, I didn't hear that it has been done, or I guess I missed it, but I don't think it's been done, and I think it should be taken into consideration.
That is a part of what their original presentation to us included, and I'll have them respond to that. But any other questions from the audience in this regard before I start having people answer questions?
Hi, I live on 110, and I just want to say, both John and I, you've probably seen us, we walk up to the square practically every day. When we get to Bear Hill Road, we, almost all the time, we let the cars go, because they take that turn going down Bear Hill, and the rides in the street, and we have to be very, very careful. We wait for the cars to go either, either direction. I noticed there was a street light put up within the past year, which has helped, because that corner, we're very, very dark walking later at night, you know, when it gets dark, but we have to be very careful walking, and we do enjoy walking in that direction. And my second question is, I have seen a Dollar General in Seabrook, and, oh, that's a different one? Oh, okay, okay. Where is the closest Dollar General around here?
We'll let them answer that one also.
Okay, okay. So my concern is people, I do see people running, people do walk dogs, maybe not all the time, pedestrians. And Bear Hill Road is, that, right there, you'll have to be very careful.
Yeah, I want to, as a runner, echo that, you have to be very careful at that intersection.
I bike through it all the time.
Go quickly or get hit. But the question of, they could use a left-turn lane on Bear Hill today on the 110, and is that something that's possible to be, that can be used here? Because I just don't see... Because I just don't see, as we heard before, sitting in that traffic trying to get a left turn with additional traffic coming out of there, dodging the runners and bicycles, is going to be an issue.
I'm assuming, Chief, that Bear Hill, having turn lanes on Bear Hill would not be mass DOT, right?
Well, I don't know if that's true, or if we're, or if we are restricted, but if we're going to state that...
I mean, do they have a certain footage from the intersection that is still mass DOT?
Do we need to get any kind of entering onto, on American State Highway there? So, if we had a configuration that was acceptable to everybody here, and the chief, and who accepts my view, and the applicant, and we move forward with a two-mass DOT, they would either say yes, they would embrace it, or no, there's no required for it, and they don't want it.
Yeah, I mean, I assume there is a distinction between what's required and what they'll accept.
Exactly.
Okay.
Jim Dyson, 24 Spring Hill Road. If I'm correct, Madam Chairwoman, a number of years ago, we voted on a warrant at town meeting for the paper street, which is the continuation of Bear Hill Road on the south side, towards 495.
North Street.
We did it because of the gentleman that lived in the corner wanted to build a house behind his house. The only access to that property would have been, would have been to open up the whole paper street. So, I'm addressing this gentleman to me here, who's concerned about which properties can be developed. And this town voted for it, and with the stipulation that it would be quarter, two-way commitment. A year passed, and the special town meeting, the current, that, that, that current, if you will, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals came up during the special town meeting and tried to slip it through, and enough people figured out that he was talking about the same warrant from the previous year. Now, I believe there are 100 acres there, not 50 home lots, maybe 45, but we found out that it, we could not amend that warrant at town meeting. It became the closest area, which happened to be downtown, which is what, eight, eight of an acre, not two acres? So, there was potential for 200 homes on that property, if the paper street was open. So, there are some concerns. Is there, is there a paper street there?
There's North Street.
It's North Street that travels through. They used to go across, or before 495, and show up on Middle Road.
I would say that it was, it was a Bear Hill Road extension. There's a paper street there.
Well, there, I...
It's North Street, it's the name of the street.
Okay, right across the street is North Street.
Okay.
All right. There was a gentleman that was ill-avized a number of years ago to buy a chunk of land back there because his son would be able to build a home on it. At the time, it went through inspectional services, then Acting Building Inspector, found out that they were trying to do a residential home in there, and it was light industrial. That whole area back there was zoned light industrial, which made it non-buildable for a residential home. There was a move to try to change the zoning, and rightfully so, it was defeated. That's the only thing that I can recall since the early 90s, late 80s, that has occurred on that. I know that parcel land today is for sale for relatively short money, a lot less than what that gentleman acquired it for. So, you know, and it's still, that still isn't permitted, that still is light industrial.
Mark Hood, and on that 99 East Main Street. My concern is primarily about truck traffic and the speeds that some of the trucks go, because looking out my shop window, I am in a position to watch trucks come and go from Brock's all day long, and they are, a lot of the times, they're going much over 40 miles an hour. And they're heavily loaded, there's asphalt and everything else, and they can't stop very fast. My other concern was, trucks now that are parking on Route 110, who's to say that Dollar General is not going to have another truck parked on 110 waiting to get into the store or so on, and that's...
Hi, I had a question. The actual address of the site is 1 Bear Hill Road.
Correct.
Correct? Now, I'm presuming Dollar General is putting a store there not only for the 6,000 some-odd residents of Merrimack, but for the surrounding communities as well. I, up until about six years ago, lived in Haverhill. If I was interested in visiting a Dollar General, I would have put into my GPS 1 Bear Hill Road, Merrimack, Mass., in order to get to it. So, I guess the only thing I want to bring up is that individuals or potential customers of surrounding areas are going to be putting in an address in a GPS of 1 Bear Hill Road. How many of them will access Dollar General via the 110 entrance? And how many of them are actually going to access Dollar General via what their GPS is going to tell them to do, which is to turn into Bear Hill and take a right onto the property?
I don't know. I don't use a GPS. I use maps.
Or do you go down, or do you say, you know, the road?
I'd access it from the main road. But, but, yeah, I, I guess what, I don't quite get what your, your concern is.
My concern is that a certain amount of traffic is going to be in the site, and I can just find presumption that we're ultimately, that most of it is going to be going down to the site from 110, but in actuality, a lot of it is going up to the site on Bear Hill Road.
I disagree. I think it's a visual issue, not, you know, you're not going to be reading your GPS at the corner of Bear Hill Road, 110. You're going to see the store the minute you get near it, and you're going to look for an access to get onto the site. I think that that's how it's going to work.
Let's go to the, the, whoops. Okay. Oh, sorry, back there. We'll, a loud-out question, and because you've already asked a question, we're going to move to answering what we haven't gotten to.
All right. I just got a real quick one, so I wanted to get on cable TV. I'm Scott Nicholas. I live on Bear Hill Road. The question that I asked before kind of concerns me a little bit, is that when Mass Department of Transport, someone goes and represents that corner of Bear Hill Road that's got nothing to do with Merrimack except trying to put a business in there, I'm not really comfortable that that is done, and we get told it's okay. No disrespect to the gentleman that did it, but how can we go on some of this work that's got a different opinion and a different view to what we have? I, I think getting the Mass Department of Transport to come out here and actually see this, and do studies, and maybe we can be involved in this if needed, because I, I just don't think it's fair to go on one person's representation, one person's work, trying to develop a business where the rest of us are trying to keep safe.
Okay, one more. Carol, whoever Carol's lobbying on behalf.
Jim.
Jim, okay.
Jim, I'm from Bear Hill. My only concern about traffic is less to do with Dollar General than it is to do with the road as it exists after 27 years. The notion that that building cited like that might impact any future needs for left turn lanes or any combination for the incredible amount of traffic that has steadily increased over the years, they actually have to get on the cell phones to get the kids out onto the street from the snowbanks, or I, it's very fast, and that people start out of those streets after which way you get onto 110 or Bear Hill Road. It's just a bit busy. I would wonder if the board could ask for a site plan that would show what it would be like if there were turn lanes involved, or in the future, if need be, because I can only see that eventually, it's a necessity, and it looks to me an awful lot like the vision in that building, really prohibits practical traffic time. I'm going to answer that. Hopefully, every question I have.
I'll ask Mr. Waterhouse.
My brother George and I are butters to the project directly across the street. We own property in number 24, which is a duplex, and my mother's former home, which we still own, at number 6 Bear Hill Road, the white central entrance colonial that is set back from the street a little bit. I just want to say, it's been stated tonight that the Department of Transportation experts have no problem with traffic in the site, on the site plan, and as direct butters directly across the street, we have no problem with that whatsoever. Thank you.
Okay. As I said, I, I think we need to start answering some of these questions here in regards to the traffic, and maybe that might answer other folks' questions. So, if we, if I've got my list here, and certainly board members, and help me with this as we go through, there, there was a question that would be directed to the developer, and maybe I can collect these, as far as considering right turn only out, coming out of the property onto 110.
In regards to, I'm sorry, my name is Bob Gage. I'm with GBT Realty out of Nashville, Tennessee. I am with the company that is proposing this development. As far as a right-in and right-out on Highway 110, I'm afraid I would have to go back to the developer, and that, I'm sorry, to the retailer, and ask that question. They typically do not prefer a right-in, right-out drive. They actually avoid right-in, right-out drives. Based on everything, all the research that we've done with DOT, traffic impact studies, we don't feel like it's warranted at this location. We don't feel like that we are proposing any kind of hazard to the existing traffic that's on 110 or on Bear Hill Road, and that final decision would have to come from the retailer before I could do that. But they, they typically shy away from that type of request.
Okay. I was going to say, if you're going to respond to that, because I had some other questions for, go ahead.
And just to add to that, I know that a lot of concerns that were just raised deal with the traffic on Bear Hill Road. Having an access, a full access onto Route 110 is going to limit the number of vehicles that actually go onto Bear Hill Road. So, it's in the best interest of both the retailer and the general public to have full access points onto two different roadways. It will distribute the traffic better, and patrons in the site can just choose the best route for them. So, there's a lot of traffic positives to having full access on East Main Street.
The thing is, the way the site and the one turn left on this drive, you're going to actually allow the whole area to work through that. So, in not having a right-in, right-out only on 110, you're going to actually reduce the amount of traffic on your road.
There were several questions in regards to just the operation of Dollar General, the number of customers that you anticipate in an hour and in a day, the closest store that exists to us, and the truck traffic generated by the store itself, which I know you answered those last time, but if you could share that with us again.
Sure, no problem. These stores, this is one of their most popular prototypes, this 9,100 square foot store. They have quite a few of them across the country, and they do thorough research on these, this type of building, this type of project on a regular basis. These stores will generate an average of 10 cars per hour all day long. They do have a peak hour in the afternoon, and it typically happens between 5:00 and 6:00, and they will generate 20 cars per hour during that one hour. So, with the store being open 14 hours a day, we have 150 cars all day long coming to go into these sites. And that's an average over their entire chain. As far as the closest store that they have in operation now is Chicopee on Memorial Drive, closest one to this location.
There's one in Nashville.
I'm sorry.
There's one in Nashville, in Amtrak Road.
Is that closer than Chicopee?
Oh, yeah.
Much closer.
Much closer.
Chicopee is way up there.
Chicopee's Western Mass. Nashville's across the border.
Well, I did, I actually did a search on their website, their store locator, prior to coming in today, and nothing came up in Nashville. I'll go back and check, but according to the website, they don't have to do that. It may be, it may be $10,000, or one or the other.
Now, if you go on Google, it'll come up, either Nashville or Nashville.
As far as truck traffic, was that the last question?
Right.
There was a question regarding the delivery trucks sitting on 110. The sites, we have to design these sites in order to get the trucks on-site, do all their maneuvering, and drop their loads, and then exit the site. Everything has to happen within the property lines of this project. So, as far as trucks sitting out on 110, that won't happen. They won't back off the streets. They do all their maneuvering on-site, and this site is designed such that that can take place on-site. They do get deliveries from their trucks once a week. So, it typically happens at the beginning of the week, it's early in the morning when they're going to get the trucks out there from the distribution centers. Throughout the week, of course, you'll have smaller trucks that are delivering to the site, where there are few trucks and so forth. But as far as the, the main deliveries for this, for this store, it'll happen one time a week, and it'll happen as early in the morning on Monday that they're delivering.
Okay, I think, did you have anything else that you noted in your notes that you wanted to respond to?
Oh, there was a question, a scenario regarding the GPS and 1 Bear Hill Road. We actually are going through the process to try to get the address changed to 110 instead of Bear Hill Road. So, if we're successful with that, whenever you bunch it into GPS, we won't be going to Bear Hill Road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you address your government's going, why do you want it to?
Well, we typically like to have the address matching the front, the entrance of the store. The entrance of the store is on 110, but that's typically the way that we like to handle whatever we're sitting on the front.
I would assume for promotional purposes, too. It's just easier to say Route 110, Main Street, Merrimack.
Yes, ma'am.
The, in regards to just the traffic due to the bus stop use in the area, I was going to go back to Jennifer's saying, how is that normally handled in traffic studies, and taking into consideration school bus stops?
In this particular case, because the AM peak hour was not counted, the bus traffic was not accounted for. Had this been a residential development with that typically peaks in the morning peak hour, when we count the traffic, we would obviously be counting the school bus traffic in there. Excuse me. So, yes, in this particular case, the school bus traffic is not accounted for. However, as I, I said in the beginning, one of the gentleman's first questions was about that AM peak hour and how busy that would be. And really, the traffic coming to and from the site is about half of what it is in the afternoon peak hour. The morning peak hour is about halfway, in the afternoon peak hour. So, although there is additional traffic in the morning baseline, really, the impact of the site is greater in the afternoon. That's not to say, it couldn't just be counted, you know, it could be, we could request that they do a traffic count there. My guess is it would result in very similar operations to what you've already found, and the site would have to be less proportional. I did want to respond to some of the other issues that were brought up. I think, I'm one of the gentlemen in the audience, brought up something very important, which is to make sure that, one example, and I don't know where the right-of-way lines are, where the property lines are for the site, but one thing, in event that someone does widen, one of these developments that everyone, you know, has mentioned in passing, it could happen, were to happen, and the traffic was enough to warrant whether it be turn lanes, a traffic signal, other improvements, to make sure that the site is located such that it's a good background from the property line. There's not going to be a problem accommodating that future widening, which I'm sure it's not. I'm sure that... I'm sure that there may be setbacks as they need to, because that if there was an issue. But it is something that is important to keep in mind, that eventually something may happen that may not be a part of this project. And as to, as far as the other issue, which was the question that was raised, as to who goes in and gives the presentation to Mass DOT, do you get a different response? That could be solved if the DPW would call them. I'm sure they could just ask the question representing the town and ask, you know, was this even considered? Did you, did you go take a look at, did you consider, you know, ask some of those questions? And I'm sure it's quite frank, and discuss it.
Thank you, yeah, that's what I was thinking of, too, that we could just reiterate the questions ourselves and get the answers directly. Also, I guess in just that regards, you know, to ask about, as far as, you know, between what is, what they require, and if they don't require it, what they would accept or be okay with happening if we desired it.
Correct. The one other item I did want to raise, the traffic study based on trip generation on industry standards. It's the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. And what that is, it's independent counts at various stores similar to Dollar General throughout the country. And it shows higher traffic than the proponent is stating. And that's why we don't necessarily depend on what the proponent tells us, we base it on this independent source of data. And that might be true, maybe the Dollar General he's developed, or he's been involved with, but for this type of a store nationwide, the trip generation is a little higher, and that was what was calculated in the traffic study, it was not based on the proponent's data.
Okay. Did people hear that, as far as that, that it was used on, it was, the trips was calculated based upon the industry standard, wasn't just relying upon what the applicant was stating. The, another comment that had been made here was the speed of the trucks. One of the things that did strike me in looking at these traffic studies is the average speed on the roads are over the speed limit. Our police department can note that, as they will.
I didn't get my, my, first part of my question answered, I don't know if you still have it on there, but I wanted to know what the acceptable Q size is, because at the end of the video, of the Q.
I'll ask Jennifer, if there is, if there is such a thing.
Well, there has to be, because they have a formula that they use, and I'm not sure what you use, whether it's girl name or what, but, so what, you know, what's acceptable based on the flow? So, you're talking about counts, but I'm sure anybody talks about, you know, how far is the traffic going to back up? That's what I'm interested in, not counts. Counts is purely numbers.
Right, that's Jennifer's question, I want to deal to the, I've seen there, there's been this discussion, and we're sort of not familiar with where the results have, because I have looked at all, you know, in Louisiana. I'm, I'm not familiar with where we're going.
So, you got, who's the traffic engineer?
I am, for the opponent. We did a lot more work with partners.
And you're going up the numbers based on the model that's accepted?
Yes.
Of the I?
So, there's not typically an acceptable Q, per se, number of cars. There is an acceptable average vehicle delay, which is a level surface D. It's right about in the middle, twenty-five to thirty-five seconds as an average delay for a vehicle. What we're showing on Bear Hill Road is a level surface C, that's in the build condition with the project in place. Level surface C, about twenty, twenty-one seconds of average vehicle delay. So, it's well within what's considered acceptable industry-wide.
So, based on the flow of the year, what's the, what's the backup?
What we're showing for the build is, you may see a two-car backup. It's tough to predict, obviously, if, you know, four cars arrive right.
I understand, you're in the A P.
Yes. So, based on the model, which is industry standard, we're showing in the build scenario, it'd be two cars.
Interesting. You've got to see it most of the time now.
That's the end of that, that's the end of that.
Well, that's how it'll be once it develops.
That's the addition to.
Right, which goes back to the primary point, that this project isn't going to really impact traffic. You're not going to see a difference, you're not going to notice a difference due to this project. It's essentially the difference between Tuesday and Wednesday, whether or not this project is here. There's not a lot of traffic that's expected to be generally five at the site.
Okay, we'll go back to the audience, if Carol can bring it.
Again, on the traffic matter, I have two concerns. One is that when Mass DOT saw the quins for that, I think they need to see it in person because of the elevation of the burn, the curve of the road, the width of Bear Hill Road, which isn't very wide. And for them to just look at a plan, keep a paper with us, seeing this from a immediate surroundings, it might be more difficult for them to judge. I believe that they really should come out and take a look at the site and give us the final whether or not it's appropriate. And the other thing I wanted to ask is, if you're often generating ten cars per hour, how is that generating enough income to keep this store in operation long term?
We don't know. Anything, as far as the, with Mass DOT, so Bob, are you willing to have that conversation with them and see ones? You know, I'm not sure if, you know, what the norm is as far as them actually looking at the site, but I know they have, you know, very high resolution GIS to look at.
If we have a series of questions, I would be more than glad to facilitate with somebody at District Four and ask the, our representative from the firm, and as well as you folks, to have a site meeting and maybe a follow-up conversation down there.
Does that sound good to the board?
Yes.
Okay, good. Can we move on to something other than traffic? Okay.
On traffic, I just wanted to follow up with a comment that Mr. Waterhouse made about owning two other properties on Bear Hill Road.
Which of course he does.
However, he certainly wouldn't be affected by any of this, because he does not live here in town, and in fact, rents out those properties.
That's not part of our discussion tonight, thank you.
I realize that, but it's just, he may, he brought that up, and I just felt.
Okay, thank you.
That he needed to be cleared up.
Moving on to, then, looking at the rest of the review, which the engineers have also been helpful with us in bringing forward, there was concerns that were raised last time by our engineer, and then, in fact, that has been responded to by the applicant, and then our engineers had a chance to review again. So, if you would, if you would present your response to those.
Sure. Again, based on comments received at the last meeting, from a site engineering perspective, there really wasn't a lot of comments that would directly affect the layout of the building, the overall site configuration, or the overall site design. But there were some concerns, first and foremost, raised relative to stormwater management, how we're dealing with runoff, rainwater runoff from the property. One of the comments raised in the initial letter from the town peer review engineer was how we estimated our seasonal high groundwater elevation, and whether or not test pits were deducted on the property. At the last meeting, they had given deducted, we were using some data that we had that we were confident in using. But at the request of the board, at the request of the peer review engineer, we had gone out and we actually deducted three test pits into the vicinity of the proposed stormwater infiltration base. Those test pits witnessed by Mr. Senavol. And basically, the outcome of the test pits indicated that what we had made for initial assumptions was correct, and that we are maintaining proper separation to the estimated seasonal high groundwater table, which is roughly forty-eight inches below the existing grade. So, we will have the proper separation, or the recommended separation, under the stormwater management guidelines. Again, as indicated by the peer review engineer, we will have the required two feet of separation from the bottom of the basin to seasonal high groundwater. We also confirmed the permeability or infiltration rates of the soil. We did go again, based on the tested data, confirm that our design, as shown, is consistent with the actual peer conditions identified for the test pit. And we had submitted a response letter to Porzy Witt, and included the findings of supplemental grain before we actually logged. And we did receive a follow-up letter from Porzy Witt, which, I don't want to speak to Mr. Willett, but there were no longer any comments relative to the test pits in the stormwater basin design. So, it's our opinion that Porzy Witt and Mr. Willett agree with our findings that the stormwater design is consistent with Mass DOT's stormwater guidelines, the pounds guidelines, and basically good, very practices as to the rates of stormwater management. There was also a request for a groundwater mounting analysis, which is a fancy way of saying, how does water that's being infiltrated back into the ground in the vicinity of the test pit, or the vicinity of the infiltration basin, what does that do to groundwater? And what we found, that at its worst case, or at its peak rate of where we're infiltrating stormwater, you're going to see about a three-point-seven-five inch differential in the groundwater, which is about that much. So, it's not going to have any noticeable impact on groundwater flows. And I think the only concern was what type of impact that was going to have on the basement to the flooding property north. Based on our findings, based on the groundwater analysis, and the very, very same for that nature, we contend that there'll be no impact, based on the very small groundwater mounting that will result, you're going to have no impact on the flooding property basement, flooding for that nature. And again, based on the follow-up comment letter we received from Porzy Witt, there's no hard right comments relative to the information we have provided relative to groundwater mounting. Apart from that, there was a concern about landscaping. There was a concern about the types of vegetation used to provide screening along the north side of the property and along the eastern side. We have changed some of the plantings, we've drawn away from the spruce that was there, and we proposed cedar in lieu of that. What we've also done is we moved the landscaping off of the top of the basin to the side of the basin directly, we directed interior to the infiltrating basin. Again, a comment raised by Porzy Witt was, you don't want to have plantings in the basin itself, so we moved to the north side of the property. We've added a few more, but basically enhanced that vegetated screen for our residential waters for the north and our residential waters for the east. We also added a fence. There was some concern that the vegetated screening wouldn't be enough, and that a more permanent screening would be appropriate. So, what we've done is we've agreed to add a fence that would run basically along the entire eastern portion of the property, to get you up to the north, and then along the entire northern end of the property as well. As indicated, we've also added a sidewalk. The applicant has agreed to propose sidewalk along the entire frontage of Bear Hill Road. There's some concern, and the new letter we have received from Porzy Witt, there's some talk of whether or not we should push the sidewalk three feet away into travelway and create a small green strip between the sidewalk and that travelway to Bear Hill Road, or whether we should actually add curving directly adjacent to the sidewalk here, because right now, as you well know, it's basically travelway and then landscaping into the property. We can deal with either one, whether the neighborhood would want sidewalk with curving, so it's up a little bit, or whether they would want green space then the sidewalk. Again, it somewhat goes back to the burn issue, where regardless of what we do, we're going to have an impact on that burn, and the addition of the sidewalk is going to create more of a rule of existence vegetation along that burn, because we're going to be cutting into that slope. In order to maintain proper grading, we're going to have to cut that slope down. And I think based on comments received from the board, from the police, the, I think it's the consensus of town staff that taking that burn down could create better visibility, getting the sidewalk, ultimately, I think what we're hearing is the best solution for that, because of the ridges. Yeah, as indicated, there really weren't any other changes to the site plan beyond the ones I just mentioned, and the few minor tweaks that we would hopefully have to make if the project received to the DOT level based on my conversations with Mike Formacella and Mike Harris, who were with that, and we're more than happy to answer any questions about the site design, the layout of the site.
Okay, actually, yeah. Dave, if you want to respond and just elaborate on maybe what you shared in your letter?
Yes, as Mr. DiStefano had mentioned, the standards that we apply to this project are the Mass DOT Stormwater Management Standards. And there's several things that any component of the project, similar to this, we're going to have to comply with. And they look at things like fluid removal from the stormwater, tolling peak rates of runoff from the site, providing an amount of groundwater recharge that at least blocks makes the redevelopment condition, and other requirements such as operation maintenance of the stormwater management system, things like that. And based on the information that the applicant has submitted, it appears that they are meeting all the requirements of Mass DOT Stormwater Management Standards. Now that they've done the supplemental soil testing and submitted that supplemental information, I believe that they are complying with those standards. The only remaining items that I saw as potential issues on the project were some minor design issues related to that sidewalk. And finally, the compatibility sensibility requirements, the state and the federal requirements, they require some minor modifications to the sidewalk design. And the only other main issue that I saw was some very small design issues with the level spreader, which is the emergency overflow device for the infiltration basin. And there are some minor modifications that I have suggested for that design. But for the most part, my concerns haven't satisfied, and we may use that whole other course.
Thank you. In regards to the sidewalk, anyone want to comment on the board? I definitely agree, there needs to be some measure that's taken to provide protection for anyone walking on that sidewalk due to the nature of the traffic in the streets there. Curb versus grass buffer. Anyone on the board have an opinion, one way or the other? I figured Bob would have an opinion.
I would prefer to see them not have a grass strip, and take the additional three feet of what the proposed grass strip would be, and widen the end of the roadway at minimum, and then put your sidewalk on an elevated curb line.
Do you want a curb?
Yes.
He wants a curb.
Relates to other discussions.
Yes, yes.
Right, right. But what you're saying is take, you know, use that space so, as was suggested, that for future road design. Right. But if future road design, we'll talk with DPW, but even if we don't have turn lanes today, if we want to have turn lanes at some point in time, that there's sufficient width of road to do that. Anybody else on the board want to comment on this before we open it up again to folks? No, no, okay. Carol can walk around. Carol can walk around again.
So the question is, in the winter, when you get a lot of snow and where do you put the snow and how do you want on the sidewalk?
Might not be any different than most sidewalks in town.
Exactly, except it's on the corner. There are a lot of people walking and running and, you know, that's a big problem. It does smell when it's airbagged.
Anyone else want to comment on any things that were just discussed? Do members of the board want to raise any other questions?
In regards to what?
Well, we, for instance, building design.
Thank you.
One thing.
You want to start or me?
By the way, on that, there's reference made here too, and I do know something was handed out at the May twenty-first meeting. Rendered building elevations and architectural design elements provided and discussed at the May twenty-first meeting. There was some paperwork, there were some renderings that were in addition to your initial submiddle of two pages or something like that, correct? Is that what it was? Because I realized I gave mine to somebody and I don't have it anymore.
That's the word. Word? Well, we, excuse me.
But, but, yes, I'll let these gentlemen speak to it.
Sandy, I don't recall getting any elevations of the brick in the actual application that was handed out to each member. They were not included. Technically, I call that an incomplete application. And right now, with what they're presenting with this colored rendering, it doesn't meet our zoning bylaws according to Article nine point nine on page fifty-nine. And you drop all the way down to nine point nine six and it continues on to page sixty, which I won't waste my time reading, folks. But it goes on and on with architectural character in the town of Merrimack. And essentially, as both of us being architects, it would include something called additive and deductive massing, meaning you have to come down to the scale of the town and the surrounding buildings. And I don't see it occurring right here. Would you like to take over?
Thank you.
That's what I'm going to get to.
Our bylaws state very clearly in this area that this building is supposed to be in keeping in design and scope with the surrounding area. First of all, I don't think there's any brick buildings of this massive. Secondly, they all have a pitched roof both ways. It's called, it's called a peaked roof. And I firstly will not support a building that doesn't include at least those two elements.
Now, another issue I have with a building like this, or any building that would go up in this area, of course, all of your air handling units will be on the roof. And I'm concerned with sound. But where are you going to, if you may, could you tell me where those handling units are going to be? Are we looking at gas rooftop units? What are we looking at to, for HVAC systems with this?
Yeah, and I think we had touched upon this in the initial meeting, but all of the HVAC equipment and condensing units will be right here on the ground, mounted on the sidewalk on the north side of the building.
Okay, I do recall you saying that. Now, what's the sound generated from that considering how quiet this is at midnight?
I don't have specific sound information. What I can tell you is the units themselves will be set on the concrete pad to the north of the building. They will be completely enclosed within a fence, then have the landscape buffer, the fence buffer here. I don't think you're going to have a significant issue with noise from the condensing units. And I tell you, on other projects where you have a site development situation next to a road like East Main Street, usually the ambient noise from the roadway system is going to be louder than what you have with the condensing units next to that.
Well, I can tell you, if I compare myself to Dick's brother, or is it your nephew that owns the house? Nephew? That owns the house that's putting, your nephew owns the house, Dick? Is your nephew owns the house that's putting the second story up?
Grandnephew.
Grandnephew, okay. Well, I live behind a commercial building myself that my family built on one-ten.
That's your problem.
I know, it's my problem, so I got to swallow it every damn day. So, but you do have, there are air handling, specifically compressors on the ground, you hear them. And I do give you credit, you do have the sound buffers there and the fencing. But I would like to know what those units are putting out for noise, gentlemen? If we could get some decibel readings, a cut sheet? Thank you.
In addition, I do believe you're proposing to have a metal clad wall at that end of the building. Does metal clad generate reverberations? Better rethink it.
Anything else on the board?
Yeah.
Pardon?
Anything you want.
Anything, I mean, it's not, we're racking up soon if we've addressed everything that people want to raise.
One more item I do have. When I looked at the application and the lighting plan and your lighting getting on to other properties, it looked a little bit excessive when it came to, what's the number of your house, Bonnie? Number ninety, East Main Street. There's a little bit of excessive spillage with the front fixture that you have to the right of the parking lot or easterly of the parking lot.
I hate to say this, but you should check out CBS and Kingsbury.
She said that last time.
I'm reiterating.
Reiterating, yes.
Because they have cutoff lights.
They have cutoff lights that are only, you know, thirty-six or forty-two inch, John. I highly suggest something pretty accurate.
What is the likelihood of getting you to improve the sidewalks running to the town and to the cemetery from the site? So people would have access walking there in a lot better situation than there today?
Yeah, along the sidewalks here. Yeah, from the other side heading towards the town. Paving, paving along, paving along the top, what's there.
Yes. Zero? So you're not, so you're not interested in investing in the town, is what you're saying?
Building, way to look. Because they'd have to go get a permit from ZBA and John.
You want a sidewalk or you want a new building?
Architectural issue.
I'm not trying to make a moral issue. I assume you want to give the, 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 but there are already many issues right now.
Okay, and we're saying what we expect you to do. With no, with no variation, we expect it to fit into the town of Merrimack.
So, well, one last time, if anybody in the audience has, all of a sudden generates a bunch of hands, all you have to do is tell them it's the end.
Hi, there's an article out of the Orlando Sentinel dated April twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen. It kind of refers to exactly what we're talking about. It also refers specifically to Dollar General. And I'm just going to do the paragraph, very short. In Orange City, a new Dollar General looks more like a quaint country general store than a big box with automatic doors. The Dollar General has dormer windows, a front porch, and near the sidewalk, along the highway, covered benches for pedestrians and a bike rack for cyclists. The developer even agreed to put faux plantation shutters on the back of the building for the sake of the neighbors. So Dollar General set the precedent.
I'll supply the balloons if you want to move it.
Forward that to us, please.
This is an article in the Orlando Sentinel dated April twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen. And the Dollar General in Orange City. That was interesting. I'm not saying this for what it's worth, but I just thought, we're discussing this and they did take this, take the consideration of the community. In that situation, I would expect that we could use that.
Will you sign that?
Well, we got to see it first, Ron.
I just have a question to follow on from what the board was asking. And correct me if I'm wrong, I thought at the last meeting when we had the discussion about the pitch roof and the design of the property that we requested some new drawings be done. I'm wondering if we're going to see those tonight? If we have.
We will see it.
We will see them tonight?
Not, well, not tonight. We will see them at a subsequent meeting.
Trust at the next meeting.
Richley's Boy Lane, Ten Acres Road. Could you explain the bylaw that has to do with being a store twenty-five hundred square feet?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thank you for reminding me. I did want to thank the residents who prepared this memo for us with a number of questions. And I do want to go through that, so thank you for raising that. If I can find where I put my notations on this. I'm just finding that one as opposed to the original one I received. Well, I have that I had one in which I made my own notations on versus the copy here. And I can't find that back, it went. So looking at, so the first issue raised here, when we look at our bylaw for rural highway, what it states is that underneath permitted uses are retail businesses, are services in building up to the twenty-five thousand square feet, retail sale of food items, including confectionery, dairy products, fruits, et cetera, sale of baked goods, sale of dry goods, sale of clothing, and sale of hardware, et cetera. And then it mentions convenience store. I think just because, my personal opinion, just because in the description on a website that word convenient is used in conjunction with this store, in my opinion, the fact that it refers to convenience stores that are up to twenty-five hundred square feet as something that's also a permitted use in addition to retail businesses that are doing business of the nature of these other items, selling the confection, the food, the confection, the dry goods, the baked goods, the clothing, et cetera, this qualifies in my mind as a permitted use. Anyone on the board have any issue that you feel it does not qualify as a permitted use without a special permit? Okay. The, the next issue that was raised in the memo from the residents was in regards to the traffic and the volume of cars and the police chief's response, the questions he had raised at last meeting, and I think all that has been responded to tonight.
Pat, where could the folks pick up the chief's, a copy of the chief's letter if they wanted to get it? At her office, okay?
And also, by the way, if you want to see, you know, those traffic studies both done by, you know, both sets of engineers on this, you know, you certainly can stop at the town clerk's office and take a look at those traffic studies yourselves. Then it raises.
Things that they've sold in the store, is alcohol being sold in the store?
It could be because it's, you know, you know, just as alcohol can be sold any, well, now, wait a second, we don't even have the blue laws anymore, do we?
No, we don't. We, I believe, and I defer to the board's selectmen, I believe, that it, we're down to one license available?
I don't know how many licenses are available.
I don't know. Does anyone else know, or?
I'm just guessing, that's not a definite, folks. You'd have to ask them.
It's up to the board of selectmen how many permits there are available for selling alcoholic beverages.
Is that my application's all there?
No. They haven't applied to.
Well, it wouldn't matter, we wouldn't see it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Then we have in regards to, make sure I get all these, the Water Resource Protection District and the special permit that the ZBA granted there and raising the issues around that. And I think, you know, that, some good questions are raised regarding that and certainly I'm sure will be addressed as the decision by the ZBA to grant that permit if it's felt that those weren't satisfactorily answered there, that indeed, you know, they, they will need to be answered. I think, you know, our research has been on the stormwater management and that that has been addressed to the satisfaction of the board based upon the engineering reviews. Then as far as the fact that it's a grandfathered lot, for the number of total square foots to, feet in the lot, it does otherwise, the question was whether or not it meets all the other dimensional setbacks, et cetera, of our zoning bylaws. And yes, it does. That was certainly a part of the initial engineering review. Then the design standards, to enhance the visual character and build, build environment of Route one-ten, that's what we spent a lot of time just now addressing and certainly intend to continue to pursue that, ensure that it is, the building itself is an asset to the town. So I think that, but thank you for those who were involved in pulling together this memo. I think it was very thoughtful of people and helpful.
That's good. I have a question. Who in the town is responsible for looking at the business case and the long-term financial viability of this project? And as a zoning committee standpoint, what the plans have to mitigate the risk that building is going to remain empty should the building fail, we're not exactly a neck up of industry in this area or other, other activity of business. And box stores and low-cost stores like Dollar General don't exactly have a long-term viability. And, and there is a risk that the business won't be sustainable. So what we're going to do is attempt to mitigate the risk of another very attractive block in that, just like the one down the street with the Lills, but that, but down the still, that, another area in this, this district where our exit is already, so what we're going to do about that? I'm sure that's going to be a serious loss.
Right. As, as far as, I mean, I think the best that this board can do is to ensure that if they leave the building behind, we have as attractive and usable and marketable building as possible.
Or another, or another low-cost box store, just to fill the space so that we don't end up having an attractive building as that type of.
Well.
Or more of a safety.
Right. I mean, certainly all those would be issues that would have to be addressed at the time. But, but we cannot, we are not in a position to challenge or question their business plan and their decision as, as far as opening here. And in site plan review, we're, we're looking at to ensure that the building is, you know, suitable and in character with the surrounding area, but not challenging the business itself.
Who in the town is responsible for looking up garbage, trash, and issue, we don't end up with a town full of empty space on top of the.
Who's responsible? I'd love to have that job. I don't know who can do that.
We did have an economic development, business development committee at one point in time, but that's defunct now, right?
Correct, so, so whatever.
Raise it with the board of selectmen.
Businesses go, come and fail and try.
We're going to try to give you a. We're going to try to give you a nice building that's with its keeping of the visualization of America. Now, were they there for one year, 15 years? This is America, they take care of it.
I mean, it would be nice if, frankly, when we, no, no, I'm just saying, we had, I liked the idea when we had an economic development committee or whatever, what exactly the name of that group was.
Maybe they went away for a good reason.
Okay, I, so as far as our task going forward, certainly is the interest of getting together with the Mass DOT and seeing not only what, to affirm what meets their requirements, but also look at what they might be willing to accept, or at least what we should be making for provisions. So if future development should dictate more directional working of that intersection, that we have the sufficient room to do that. At least this development doesn't lessen the room we have to do that. Also, we'll be very interested in seeing renderings of buildings that are along the line, which we've been talking about, if the applicant is agreeable into doing that, because, you know, you know, we're definitely interested in seeing a different type of building. I did like that description of the dormers and porches. I don't know if it has to quite have porches, but...
Sure, yeah. I make them handicapped accessible all the time.
Right. Other things that we have still going forward. Looking at Pat, the rest of the board, Dave, anybody, is there anything else we have out there?
She's got a little good idea.
Okay, sure.
How you doing? Give me ZX, if you're over at Kyle Road. I actually, I wanted to come here early and look at the map, but I had a little difficulty in as the town has the location of the meeting in Town Hall, so I got here a little late. It sure surprised him.
Carol was given, being here, and the posting has here.
The posting was here.
Yeah, the posting was here. Maybe some website had it wrong, but all the official notice...
The town of Merrimack website has it wrong, it hasn't listed it as Town Hall.
Oh, okay, well, the official notice said it was here.
Like, the one that, that met the, the one sitting in the window in Town Hall says here, the one on the notice board says here.
Oh, I'm not trying to say there wasn't something wrong.
Any, you had a question?
Yes, I heard you made a comment about the, you know, the lot itself was a great part of the, but the way I see it, the lot makes you feel about it, but how it still lives in there?
No, no, what they, just to clarify, the grandfathering is the, for the required size of lot in this district, the lot is slightly short of the required square foot. But, but I'll, I'll let that, here, I'll let our building commissioner explain as far as the grandfathered status.
Well, there was a decision, an application was made, and it was researched, and it was a grandfathered building lot. So, I mean, if it was created today, no, it would be undersized, and they would have needed a variance for the fact of it being undersized. It didn't require it because it met all the criteria and all the filing dates and everything else when it was created prior to zoning.
Right, but would the frontage be considered Bear Hill Road's frontage?
This is one Bear Hill Road.
Right, which one Bear Hill Road is currently listed by the town of Merrimack as rural agricultural, and now it's actually in the overlay district, but it doesn't seem to matter. And I see them, they, you know, certainly they get their frontage off of one road and their street entrance off another, but I'm more concerned with the preservation overlay district that's, to me, just doesn't disappear. And to keep it looking pretty in the way it's intended to be right now, you know? I mean, it seems like that whole overlay district just disappeared, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know, it's in it.
But, but...
And I know we're talking about the 300 feet, it's 300 feet from the center line of the road, and the actual town map shows that overlay district actually draws through 110 at the other side, but it didn't...
You're right, it does.
Okay, so it doesn't disappear, it's still there, and I think it's the most important thing to look at.
Good point.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, we will, actually, Dave, too, if you could look at that as far as the overlay district.
You know, especially if they get their frontage from Bear Hill Road.
Well, yeah, it really doesn't matter, just because of the way it is drawn on the map, that it goes totally through the rural highway district.
Goes all the way across the street.
Down to the industrial.
It's the center line.
Right, right.
And I know that's the total opposite of what you've been saying tonight, but I read it, and that's what it said, 300.
Right, right, yeah, we, we, good point, as far as looking at that overlay district. I mean, I, you know, we will take a look at that and also have that addressed.
Right, and my feeling is if they get their frontage from Bear Hill Road, they should have to go by the rules.
I don't think it matters where the frontage is from, it, it's just, it lies within the overlay district, you're absolutely right.
The frontage you have on the main is supposed to be 200, they've got 130. The frontage on the side is probably 300, so they're, they're good, you know? And I mean, the lot size itself is seven and a half percent smaller than it's supposed to be for the rural highway, okay? You're up to 55 percent is covered in some kind of impervious surface, you know? I just see a lot of exceptions being put out there.
Right, right, no, no, you...
You can do that, you can give me a shrub, you can give me a sidewalk that goes absolutely nowhere, you know? Yeah, you got 130 feet of frontage of sidewalk on the front, it brings you nowhere, you know? So you're going to put the building in for sidewalk? I, I don't understand it.
Well, that's a little bit of an oversimplification, but I know, I understand where you're coming from. They do have to make an improvement, as Bob has mentioned in this meeting and past meetings. They'd be putting a sidewalk in across 110, Bob? I imagine DOT would be asking for that, improve that sidewalk, not that you're aware of, but we're going with the sidewalk up Bear Hill.
We're going with sidewalk and, the sidewalk is probably, the end of it probably in all directions.
In all directions, so you're...
Yeah, the sidewalk's going nowhere, but it's, it's beginning.
Right, right.
Bonnie, is there a sidewalk in front of your house?
Yes.
All right, and there is a remnant of the sidewalk on the front of this.
Yeah, yes, yes, there is.
And the pitch now, there's a couple more patches.
Yeah. So this would be addressing that. And yes, the one, the one along Bear Hill will terminate at the end of this property, but we're still going to ask them to do this. But, but your point being around, we'll take a look at what impact that has in regards to the overlay.
Can you explain a little bit more what the overlay district is? Amy, thank you for standing up and asking.
We will.
It's Article 12, folks, that you may want to take a look at online, and beginning on page, excuse me, I had my, only my nine marked for tonight.
77, is where it is.
77, thank you. And, "The purpose of the Rural Agricultural Preservation Overlay District is to encourage the development pattern that preserves the established agricultural and forested landscape along the town's rural roadways and protect the scenic beauty of the town." I'll let you read the rest of it at home, if you don't mind.
Right, right, right.
You did great, John. Thank you.
Okay, I think indeed we can close the hearing for tonight with a continuation until, let's figure out a new date here.
My date we'd like to return, gentlemen. Sorry? The next available meeting, date?
The next, the next meeting, and we do want you, I mean, in saying, in looking at that overlay district, you know, if you can respond to that also.
Well, should we have...
And then Dave, well, then Dave will review it. Dave doesn't have to generate it, he has to review it.
I would say, I suggest, Madam Chair, that we look at the meeting after the 4th of July, so people can enjoy their holiday a little bit.
Yeah, I was looking, Pat, what have we set for July meetings?
We haven't, the Sonia Jennings, too.
Oh, okay, so we haven't set our meetings for July yet. Just to let people know, and I'm probably as bad an offender as anyone in this, we're supposed to be meeting the, the first and the third Tuesday, but we wind up month to month setting our meeting based upon everybody down the table's schedule and the applicant's schedule, et cetera. We, we hold to Tuesdays, but it's not always the first and the third.
And we try to post it correctly.
It was posted.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't think we're going to want to do the first Tuesday, because that's, that's...
I don't know why Cal didn't put that on.
Yeah. Pat, you have the calendar, if we do, yeah, I, I don't think, the second...
No, no.
July 2nd, I can't imagine there's a whole lot of takers in wanting to do...
About 9:23.